Good vacation. How nice to see you.
Good evening. I'm here earlier.
That's okay. We're happy you're here now.
How are we doing?
Good.
Fantastic. Good to see everybody. It's been a while for some of you. Good to be back and be able to take this time to open the meeting in prayer. Blessed Father, let's... Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to enjoy this time of using our freedoms to sit here and to deliberate and to make choices about our town. We thank you for each of these individuals who are members of the city council and the mayor that have come and taken their time to do this role that they've been elected to do. Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom, discernment in the different decisions that they are making tonight. We thank you for the opportunity that they have to do this. We thank you for the freedom that we have to be here tonight, that we have this opportunity. Father, I ask that whatever decisions are made would be an honor to you within the confines of your word. Allow each of these individuals to stand up for their conscience, to do what's right, and to make the honorable choices in everything that they do. Father, we thank you that we live in this great land and that we are given these freedoms by you through your choices and through those who have given their lives for this freedom. Allow us to remember them, to honor them through the wisdom and the choices that we made, Father. We ask all these things in your son's blessed name tonight, in her shoes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think Mike just...
We need to shut.
Yep, so well, we'll let him shut the door here and then... There he is. Don't bother, just sit down. We're gonna call the minute order and begin with the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated. Thank you all for coming tonight. We'll begin with the roll call. Devin? Randy Connel?
Here.
Mindy Galvick here. Larry Lambert?
Here.
Bob Porter?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Mayor Sue Hammond?
Here.
Alzira Concorde, City Councilmember Randy Connel. And now it's time to give approval to the agenda if you're so inclined.
I move that we approve the... Excuse me. Agenda has rented. That's like a... That should be a tongue bluster, but it was.
Motion from Bob and seconded by Steve as mumbled. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we move to reading and approval of the minutes.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2021 regular meeting.
Second. That motion from Larry seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So now we'll move into pre-approved reports, and I see Commissioner Blomans here. Would you like to go first?
Yes, and I'll try to be brief. That stuff sometimes.
Okay, John.
Well, anyway, I'll start last night. If you watch basketball, my team up in East Lansing, they miss me about Louisville. But that North Carolina team looks pretty good. So if you're down from Ann Arbor, you're pretty sad this morning, but that's the breaks. So anyway, just got to touch a little few things today. Finished our county budget. We'll approve it here in December. Last year, our budget was basically about, it was eighteen... Excuse me. Our revenue last year, or 2021, and it's actually good to be more, but we had put in our budget eighteen million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And that's called what we call general revenues from activities and everything. Realistically, we passed through our governmental agencies and through the county a total of fifty-four million dollars. So state and federal monies, grants, so on and so forth. But here's what's really striking to me. We're anticipating, this is a very conservative figure for next year, for revenues. And again, an awful lot from, we get a lot of our revenues, of course, the property tax. SEV is shot up in this county. It's moving really quick. But next year, we're looking at nineteen-three from eighteen-one-six. Our budget this year is approximately eighteen-three. We're looking at a possible million-dollar surplus. This year, we were looking at three-fifty, four-fifty surplus, and I think our surplus actually be around seven-fifty. In this era of the COVID and the pandemics, our tax revenues have increased because of activity. So another thing that we're having not a whole lot of trouble with, but trouble, a finding employees. We're luckily that we have an excellent health director in Larry Johnson, and he's been able to maintain his staff. There are counties in this state right now that do not have nurses. You know what? After two years of COVID, a lot of them left. We've been able to maintain most of our nurses, and we've had a few leave, but we've been able to replace them. We have given raises over the last three years, probably a total of about eight percent. We're looking at another two percent January 1st. In our area, we are the low-paid, we're around us, because we have Genesee County, Livingston, Ingham, Saginaw, with Livingston and Genesee probably being the highest-paid counties. Ingham's not too far behind. But if we can keep at the low end of the scale and stay competitive, we're able to attract people. Another area that we've had a tough time keeping and hiring people, once they get trained, is prosecutor's office. He has trained some very good prosecutors. We are very busy in our court system, especially with drug cases, especially with meth and the sale of meth. And our drug task force that works through several counties here has done an excellent job of bringing those people to trial and getting them convicted. So that's been real busy. So from the highlights areas, we had a half person working for the clerk, and we made that person full-time in October. We also, for next year's budget, gave the clerk another full-time person for the vital records. Vital record side is they handle all the court proceedings and the bookwork and all that kind of stuff from Circuit Court. COVID has affected us a little bit this year. I know that Circuit Court had quite a battle with several people out for a while. They're all back to work now, and so on and so forth. Big areas that we're working on right now. And when I come back in twenty, we really delved into Blue Cross Blue Shield costs. And in twenty, we have saved approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the year before. And in twenty-one, we've saved eight-hundred thousand from the year before. We hired a company called Forty-four North, who are experts in handling Blue Cross Blue Shield and doing, putting out for competitive bid. It's surprising how much Blue Cross Blue Shield comes down in their cost once you have a competitor in the room. And we anticipate big savings again in twenty-one. Our actual increase for twenty, or twenty-two, is actually three percent. I've been hearing fifteen, eighteen percent for Blue Cross Blue Shield for twenty-two. So we've really gotten into that and stayed on. And I'd like to thank our county administrator, Brian Boggs. He's been excellent. He really knows systems in government, and he has a good way. He knows a lot of people that have a lot of things to do with us. Also, the road commission, I go to road commission meetings, kind of interesting. They're a busy place, but they have enough salt and sand they think for a normal winter. Hopefully, it's not a horrible winter. I did watch on TV today, Houghton Lake was froze over and a bear was crossing it. So that's, that's pretty cold this time of year going on with that. Also, we're in the process, we met last week, we've been meeting with the veterans. It looks like we possibly, we have a building out on State Road, which is Shaiwasi Street in Corona. It was the old Driften home. It is now used by the state probation officers, part of it. And the other part was used for, I call it overnight sleeping, for people who had to come in and stay in lockup overnight. But that's not gonna happen anymore. We haven't used it now for a year and a half. That whole side, which is probably a good four to five thousand square feet or more, we're looking at rehabbing that into the new veterans' office with veteran facilities. And they're looking, they're really excited about it. So we might be doing some bids by the first of the year, maybe some remodeling. The building is very well-built, cinder block, cinder floor, has a new roof on it about five years ago. Also, it's all wired for everything you can imagine in today's market. But that'll get them out of the cramped third story of our Serbeck Building where the county commissioners are and give them a lot more room, because they're a busy group. And we've become kind of focal point for veterans retiring. They come to Shalice County, so that's pretty good. Also, a big deal that I've been working on as chairman of finance, bonding of our MERS debt. We're very nervous about the long-term, of course, we've been nervous for a long time, about MERS. If we kept our MERS, this year on January 1st, we went to the defined contribution. All our labor groups, all our employees now are on the defined contribution. Those people who were here before January 1st, of course, are grandfathered. But we're also going to be offering those people a buyout if they want to buy out their MERS and then commit to the defined contribution. We're looking at a program that'll take eighteen years to pay off, and it'll bring down... We presently for MERS, our normal contribution is one million dollars a year for retirement for our county employees. But actually, we're paying six million dollars. Five million dollars is called the legacy cost. We're one of the counties that's a little cheaper than most. And so, but we're looking to bond, and with that bonding at today's rates, we're looking to save about twenty-three million dollars over eighteen years in cost. So we're right into that. We've had the bankers in, the firm in Lansing who handles bonds, sale of bonds, permission from the state, have all our stuff for MERS, so on and so forth. And we're looking to get that, hopefully, to sell the bonds first part of next year. So we are busy, and we're trying to save the taxpayers' money. All these things have taken place without raising your mills. If we didn't, if we didn't bond for MERS and handle that like we should, we would probably have to ask the county taxpayers for three to four more mills on top of the five-point-five-five-five. But we don't expect to do that, nor will we do that. So that's just one area. I'm sure I forgot some things, but you know, I could chat all night, but any questions?
Any word on the allegations, or the allocations that were requested from local municipalities?
Oh, yes, yes. No, I'm sorry. That's, I know I forgot. We've had a lot of discussions about, you know, activities in like, initially, like water projects, parks, making up overtime for employees, hiring more people. We hired more staff for our health department this year. We brought in retirees. We all have retirees that live in the county that are nurses. And a lot of them commit and work three days a week. My wife worked a couple of days a week as a volunteer, the shots time. I mean, we had a very good coordination. And then the federal government said in August, well, you know, we're gonna have our rules promulgated by October 1st. Final rules, which is money for, and we're broadening some of the areas. Well, October 1st became December 1st, and now December 1st has become April 1st of next year. Obviously, you can see what they're doing. They're gonna open up the spigot for election next, next fall. But what we've discussed and several of the commissioners and several people that have come to us and talked to us, they would like to see maybe two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars go to each district. And of course, my district is Woodhull and Perry, City of Perry, Village Morris. Other people have districts that taken maybe three or four townships, maybe a city, part of a city, so on and so forth. And then like, I was at Woodhull last night, and they said, well, then what could we use it for? I said, you would be able to use the monies and the parameters of what you can use COVID money for if they ever finally get the final rules. But that would be something that we're talking about. Also, we've been talking that a great portion of it could go to paying, if right now you can't use it for retirement, a pension, legacy cost, but possibly legacy cost. Also, they opened it up, and so we're putting a new roof on the jail at five-hundred thousand dollars. There's a lot of work involved in that besides just putting a roof on it right now. Did half of it this fall, do the other half next summer. That we can use for COVID money. Also, there's been a lot of discussion about jails, especially the jail part in the jail, kitchen area, all those areas, and maybe doing some improvements in those areas. But I kind of like the idea of the two-fifty, and you could probably break it down a little bit as per capita, you know, according to population or population need. But that might help individual jurisdictions with some of the things they have on their plate. Or they could get together and maybe do something else, I mean, with somebody not at the door.
John, have you actually received the first half of that money?
We have all our money. They sent it all to us, thirteen million dollars.
So you have it all. You just need to...
Finally, yeah. And keep in mind, it's, here like, you know, we have city council. You're all from City Perry. I'm from City Perry. You know, I'd never be on a council. But when you have seven commissioners, they represent, that's like seven, you know, state reps seats. And some communities have different needs than others. And also coming to, coming together and saying, shall we help county stuff? Or should we help county stuff and local stuff? I have some commissioners that want to keep all the money. And I have several commissioners that say, no, we should, that was kind of pot of money, and we should help some of our cities, villages, or townships. Also, we were presented, of course, I mentioned this earlier when I've been here, drains under roads. We can do drains under roads. We can do sanitary drains. That's like, I think it's Prairie Drain Number Two, which we release in our pond water in the spring. That's Prairie Drain Number Two, or One. It's one or the other. And you can work on those. I mean, you can, also, they're good, you can do parks. We're gonna do some major park work again this year. We have been spending sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year on county parks for the last seven, eight years. We have an old school out on Kirby Road at one of our major parks. And we're gonna take that building and remodel it into a den door or open it up for outdoor, make it real nice. It already has nice bathrooms, but we don't, we don't use the inside anymore. But we're thinking about remodeling that. We planted sixty-two four-inch trees at Shaitown this fall. We put in fishing piers. We put in bathrooms. And our parks are really, are really being used. There's a, there's a piece of parkland over by Bancroft that was given to the county seven, eight years ago. It's four acres on the river, and it's virgin timber, and the trees in there are just beautiful and huge. Sometime, it hasn't really been developed. It's right next to, oh, what's the road down there? Anyway, it's down there by Bancroft and the Shaiwasi River. And it's right across the street, and you take this little path back, and you go, wow, that's a big tree. There's some ocean there that is big as that area right there. So anyway, we've, we've had a lot of activity in our parks and on the river. There was times on the river this summer when kayakers filled the river, up and down.
And I think that's all great. I do.
Yeah.
But, and pardon me, if I interrupted you, did you, okay. But none of that is here.
That's right.
We don't have any of that, John.
No. We don't have any lakes.
For my comment for the commissioners that want to keep it all at the county to use for county stuff, that's not fair. We don't have any county stuff.
No.
I agree with divvying up some of the money and giving it to a district and then proportioning up grants by population. I absolutely agree with that. I think two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is too little.
Well, I...
I think that needs to be five-hundred thousand to each district. That's my, my opinion. I would like the other commissioners to know that.
Yeah. And I know, truthfully, I might be the only one that might sort of agree with you.
Yeah. I understand that. But see, they're all in an area where they have county benefits. They have county parks. They have lots of benefits that really are for their residents. We have none.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Also, I'll point this out too, in reapportionment, this district is still the biggest.
Yeah.
We, yeah, the top part of the county is lost residents, and the south part of the county is gained residents. It did make a difference in apportionment, but someday it will. And there's a lot of activity going on, but even in Dumas.
Councilmembers, do any of you have any...
I can reiterate what you said, Sue, because we've got, as you know, I know, John, we've got some water projects that are...
Yeah.
One in particular that's not by choice, we need to do it. A little piece of that money would certainly go a long way towards helping our budget.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Oh, I know. I, I said...
I just want to make sure you know.
Yeah.
It's just a reminder.
And Sue keeps writing letters, and everybody, and I, those letters are put right in front of them at their meeting. And I have comments, and actually, it's now moved, and they've met with their constituents in their districts, and they're similar sentimental about that. Yeah. And I would not have any problem. And actually, if you think about it, let's say it was five-hundred thousand. Okay, we have Perry, Perry Township, Village Morris. We have, we have a good idea and Woodhull, what would be good for us. But you know, there are three, almost four commissioners who touch Owasso, Corona. I mean, then we have a commissioner of March season, Durant touches part of Venice. And then the district next to us, it comes up right into Corona. Gary Holzhausen comes out of Corona and kind of touches Owasso, and the other three are in Owasso, and they go out to the townships. Yeah, so I mean, any of those monies would be very beneficial in many areas for a lot of those activities. So I mean, it's probably, as we keep thinking about it, it's probably not, not beyond what we could do. Also, keep in mind, only about fifty percent of COVID monies has been spent or actually, what do you want to call, given for whatever. They're still holding lots and lots of money. I mean, it's a trillion dollar.
Yeah. Well, the, the indication at first was that we'd get half, we'd get it in trenches, one trench, second trench. So fifty percent we have, the other fifty percent will come next spring.
So internally, we're expecting that, some of that, those monies allocation is the word I'm looking for.
Yeah.
It'll be allocated out, and we may, as a county, receive another big bundle of cash. And you know, jeez, when you're holding all this kind of cash, and like I've said, our tax revenues have done well. I mean, we aren't cutting employees. We have, through attrition, you know, farmed out some activities this last year. But we, we could run county government on exactly what we get and then save money. And we haven't used the tax and Lincoln Fund now. This will be the third year, and that's really healthy. That's, that's kind of like our bank. Those are, yeah, that's about, I bet at the end of the year, that'll be fifteen billion dollars. So I mean, we have that. So there's...
Does it say something?
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate that you are adding people in the clerk's office, county clerk's office, but I wanted to say that you depleted them, so I appreciate that you're finally filling them back up. Because that office has hurt ever since that happened.
I didn't deplete them.
You can share my, my opinion, if there's anybody that helped with that, let me hear that. Because that was, that has been a struggle in that office. That was, I don't know why that happened. I have my own opinion how, why it happened.
Yeah.
To say that, you know, we're adding on more people, knowing finally giving them back.
Yeah. That person came on this year, we made that person full-time, then we had another full-time person. Also too, she added to her revenues too. I mean, there was, I mean, it wasn't really a trade-off, but she actually has increased her revenues because of activities. And I, you know, and I'd like to say some nice things about the treasurer and the clerk and register of deeds and the sheriff and all of them. During COVID, an awful lot of those people came in, and I know the clerk and the treasurer, when they had people doing estates and had to get paperwork done, they'd come out of their office, take the elevator, the steps down, meet the people outside, hot weather, cold weather, freezing weather, rain weather, because they weren't allowed in the buildings. Everybody had to wear masks. That went on for months and months and months. That will wear on you, folks. Yeah. Yeah. And so, we've, we've really tried to enhance their pay. Up until four years ago, pretty much, county employees had not, had not had a real raise in about ten years because of the recession, the Great Recession, they're really, and our SEV weighed down, and we were, we were kind of poor there for several years, several years. So, yeah.
Any, any other questions for John?
John, you said that we have seven districts in the county?
Yes.
And you got, oh, just under fourteen million dollars, thirteen-seven?
Yes, it's thirteen-seven, but actually, it'd be more.
Let's round it up to fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen-seven.
I think my math work is here. They could have a million dollars to each district, and still the county keeps seven. What are they gonna do with that seven million?
Right now, we haven't really hammered down the plan, really. We've used about three million of it for, we supplanted wages that we were allowed to do because of a formula by the federal government, but actually, we saved that three million dollars, and that's in our general fund. I mean, it's, our general fund surplus grew by three million.
I think the purpose of the money that was thrown everywhere was to help the citizens.
That's right.
Not the county. I'm okay with hiring people. That's good. But we also need to spread it around and help the communities who haven't had the revenue as the county has in the last ten years for our infrastructure, our sewer, our water, and all of those things, and plan ahead for our rainy days, which we're part of the county. So if we had fell on hard times, the county's gonna go, well, that's too bad. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, I think that was the whole purpose behind the money.
Yes, it is. And...
So I think they need to remember that, that, you know, it's not to hoard it here. It's to put it out, which every dollar you invest, that money, I think you'll get a return.
Oh.
By people coming in, more residents, more revenue.
Yeah.
It seems like the county improvements that are happening are coming from the ARPA money. And then the county money's going towards unfunded pension liability, and that's how you're back for that.
Actually, unfunded pension liabilities, I mean, they...
You say five to six million is what you're paying actually, and you end up paying that extra because you didn't pay it the first place?
No, no, no. That's already in our budget. If, if we could take that five million that we would not like to have spent on legacy costs from nineteen-sixty-three, we would be spending...
The county not paying it back then.
Yeah, we would be spending fourteen million in just general activities instead of nineteen. Yeah, I mean, so...
The City of Perry is kind of shouldering the load of the county not paying that unfunded pension liability all the way back then. Is how it ends up playing out.
Every property tax payer, not just City Perry. It's everyone.
Well, the money we're talking that we could use, that the county's using, and it doesn't sound like we're gonna get, even though board members got money, that doesn't seem right to me. I mean, the City of Perry is essentially losing out on money because of unfunded pension liability a long time.
Or over, just nineteen-sixty-three. Yeah.
And I mean, to some, you're telling us like how financially great you are, but we can't give you money and we're paying ourselves back.
Well, I could come here and be poverty, but then, you know, you wouldn't worry me on that, but...
I'm absolutely in agreement with what Bob said. I mean, I would certainly be pleased with five-hundred thousand instead of two-fifty. But a million for each district certainly makes sense to me because it's still... makes sense to me because it still leaves the county plenty of money to do the, the necessary things for the county. And I absolutely agree with what Bob said. The federal government dispersed that money to be shared with the citizenry, not kept by the county commissioners everywhere.
Well, you're, I, I'm going to say right now, I'm, I'm outvoting. Hard. I have, really, there might be three of us commissioners who would say this is really, yeah, this is what we need to hear from our citizens. This is what we can do. I have three or four commissioners that want to keep, keep it all.
We would like you to share our opinions strongly with them.
Oh, I have.
And yes, I've been writing letters, John, because I want the commissioners to know how we feel. They should react to how we feel because that money was given to the county to benefit-
Yes.
The county.
Yes, I, I certainly agree. I, I'm in your corner. I, yeah.
I don't want you just in my corner. I want you up there telling them.
If the county wants to take over our water program and fix our, and add, that'd be great. They can do that. Then they can take the cost of fixing and repairing and maintaining. Then they can keep all that money. But until they're willing to do that, they need to disperse it.
Well-
As soon as the tools are set and able to do that.
Don't, don't, don't look, don't look for the county. I mean, this money, this, this pot of money is a one time thing. Yeah, I mean, the county doesn't do anything. They don't have the kind of funds that the Fed gives to the city.
I'm getting a little, a little over the edge, but.
Yeah. Oh, no, I, hey, I, we have these arguments quite often. I'm saying, look, I mean, we got to have some plans here by next spring because you're supposed to have the money allotted to be spent by the end of '24. And, but they'll let you do it through '26 because of, you may have some things in there. Well, okay, fine. And we expect, we expect, the SEV in our company has gone up tremendously the last three years. And we're looking at '22 to be better than '21 or '20 or '19. You know, the, the solar farm hasn't, they, they paid like one third of the taxes, like in '20 that they would eventually owe. They paid about 60% through, um, '21 and they'll be 80, 85% through '22. I mean, and those are chunks, like the county's shares over, like right now is a million dollars and we're looking at 1.5 million.
And, and that's great. And, and it's struggling back.
Like what you're saying, yeah, if we didn't have, we, in, in a sense, we should be using the COVID money exactly what we should, one time activities for development, so on and so forth. Because it isn't really going to impact our budget. If we didn't have the COVID money, our budget still would be really good.
That's right. The taxable value or the SEV as you refer to it is not guaranteed, John. You know that as well as-
Oh, yeah. Well, we could plunge in some 911.
In 2000, exactly. 2003, we were at the peak of our SEVs in this area all through Shawasi County. And by 2007, we were all-
Oh, it just, it just crushed.
It just crashed so hard and so fast. Not through any fault of the residents, the county. It, but it can happen. And we can't say, okay, well, we can spend this because our SEVs are going up and so we're going to have more money, more money, more money. We can't absolutely rely on that. But the COVID money, the ARPA money, is to be dispersed with the residents of the county.
Yes.
And the commissioners need to understand that.
Yeah, I can't believe that the commissioners that are resisting that approach-
Yeah.
Are supported by their constituents that they represent.
Well, I hope, my, my, truthfully, I think we're all, Perry Township, City of Perry, a little bit more enlightened on what's going on. I mean, I really do. There's, there's pockets in this county that those, I, they don't, they don't get to Lansing or Flint. I mean, they, there is. I mean, there's, there's really different dynamics in all our districts. Yeah, that's a good way to put it. So, just a couple of things. I-69 corridor, we've tried to meet the last two times, did not have a forum. We don't have much really to do. There's big reports that tell you what's going on and the employment and the percentages. Business is just booming, folks. There's a, there's a thousand jobs in Shawas County going begging, all levels of activity. My, my son's managing a plant in Holt. And I mean, they just having a heck of a time finding people to work to get their machine, machine parts out. I mean, it's just really something. But also the Fire Board, the ambulance personnel voted to have a union and they, it passed. So they now have the International Firefighters Association.
International Association.
Yeah, okay, international. Yeah, I suppose. Yeah. So, well, we'll be handling that. The board will be handling that. So, anything else? It's a short meeting, I will keep. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I believe that's all for any pre-approved reports. So we'll move to public comment. I think we have a couple of guests, maybe. Are you here for public comment tonight?
I'm not, obviously.
You're not?
No.
I am, okay. I'll, I'll just remind you that we do welcome public comment. You have a five minute time limit and you're welcome to come up. If you'd like your name to be in the minutes, be sure to give your name so that Devin can-
Thank you. My name's Nicole Ray. I am here in house with the Prop 1 campaign. But I'm going to start off by reading a statement that Jonathan Moses, who's a resident of Perry, sent me, sent me to read tonight.
Who, who sent it to you?
Jonathan Moses. He was at work. He couldn't get his stuff covered. "Let me start off by saying how disappointed I am in our mayor. If you weren't going to listen to the people, then why did you even have this proposal on the ballot? Once you put it on the ballot, you should respect the outcome. Either way, it turned out. To say the people were misinformed is a joke. It was your job to inform them on why you didn't want a medical shop in our community, just like the people advocating for it did. Your job is working for the community and doing what they want, not what you want or need." So in closing, I'm going to make this short and to the point. If you don't want to do what the community has voted for and has, maybe you should step down as mayor and let someone who is going to respect our vote in democracy. And that was verbatim from him.
And because you did mention his name, could you give us his address?
Honestly, I don't have it in front of me.
But he's a city resident? Okay.
Um, and this is coming from me, not from him, but I just listened to this nice presentation about the, um, the COVID money. And I had a couple of thoughts about that. That being that you want the commissioners to react to how you feel, but you don't want to honor the election results. And you aren't, you can't believe the commissioners who want to keep all the money are supported by their constituents. But how do you think your constituents want to support you when you are refusing to honor election results? Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to communications. Devin? No communications tonight. So we'll move into our mayor and department head reports. The reports that I would like to share are mostly to do with what's coming up in our events this month here in the city of Perry. This Saturday, the 4th, from 10 a.m. to 2, the Hummer will be parked down to Carl's Grocery where it will be stuffed with food and donations for the food bank. So remember that that will be going on. And then we do have our Santa mailbox on the sidewalk out by the library. And that's for Santa letters. If there is a return address provided, those letters will be answered by Santa. We have our Christmas fantasy coming up on the 11th. And that starts at 5:15, 5:30-ish. If you're there by 5:15, you'll be sure to get a good view because we have the choir from the high school bringing a program. We have fireworks that you'll see from that location, our official tree lighting, the arrival of Santa, Mrs. Santa. And then once that opening ceremony's over, Santa and Mrs. Claus will go over to the McQueen House to greet the children. And many of our businesses are going to be open. The fire hall will be opened as a warming center. We have a gift drawing. Many gifts have been donated. And so you put your name in for the drawing and you might get some of that. There's lots of free things going on, lots of decorations, and just an opportunity to have a great time as a community. And that goes on until 8 o'clock. And that is Saturday, the 11th. Shirley did tell me that the city did receive a donation of $500 to the Gift of Water Program. And that, there were five veterans' families that benefited from that in paying family a water bill. And let me just look at my notes. Okay, the only other thing I have is in regard to our last meeting, I misspoke. And I asked Devin to confirm that. When she listened to the video, I said, once the ordinance is drafted to allow the medical marijuana dispensary or provisioning center, then it would go to a vote. That, that's wrong. And, and I knew it was wrong and I just misspoke. It does not go back for a vote. We know what the people want and that's what we're trying to accomplish by creating that in the ordinance and through the planning commission. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. It does not have to go again to a vote. So we'll move on now to department head reports. Who would like to go first? John?
Just a quick update. The water tower, the bid specifications and everything have been completed and they should be returning by the 15th of December to be opened. There won't be an awarding that day, but that's the day that they're due back. Leaf collection, brush collection are pretty much completed. We're going to go out tomorrow and finish up a couple piles that were covered in snow on the Oaks. My recommendation is that we'll continue to pick up bags probably throughout the month. If not, you can deliver the stuff up to the DPW back by the cell tower. There's spots back there for brush and leaves.
Do people need to contact you ahead of time when they're going to do that?
Um, we have it marked. Just don't dump it in front of the building. It's back, way back in there. There's signage that I believe is sufficient to-
Okay. Any questions for John, anybody?
It's under surveillance, so.
Okay, very good. Megan, do you want to go next?
Sure.
I'll introduce once more, Megan, our new treasurer.
Hello. I don't have a lot this week, but just want to let you all know that winter tax bills were mailed last week. We have already started to receive some events here at City Hall. Auditors will be in attendance at our next meeting, which is December 16th, to present the 2020, 2021 audit results. And just on a personal note, I've been utilizing a lot of webinars from the Michigan Department of Treasury as well as the software we use, which is BSNA. So I've been learning a lot in the last few weeks. That's all I have.
Any questions for Megan?
Okay.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Kyle, please teach Fox.
Good evening, everyone. Update on a few things. We are navigating through a new computer aided dispatch program. We've had the last program, which was the original program that showed us coming here back since 2001. So a new technology, huge learning curve. I'm already catching all the grumblings and haven't even implemented it to be able to use yet. But I definitely see the expanded capabilities with the new program. And technology has definitely changed. So that's, that's a plus, but it'll take a while to, to actually see that or fit that. Our new vest did arrive finally. Took a couple months extra compared to what that normally takes. But in lieu of the nationwide shortage of just about everything, I'm not complaining by any stretch. Now that we've been able to receive them, try them on, make sure they fit and all that, we can pay the bill. Once we pay the bill, then we can seek reimbursement through the grants from the Department of Justice and the USDA that we applied for and were granted. I just completed Monday, a two month long renewal of our FCC license for our local radio frequency that we have. It's not utilized hardly at all, but in emergency, I need to think that, boy, I wish we had some radios that could just line a site, talk to each other. And so we can do that with this. It's a 10 year renewal. And I did it 10 years ago. And it's completely changed, the whole process. So unfortunately, it took a little bit longer, but I actually reached out to them Monday morning, first thing. And they were extremely helpful. I had two people from FCC on the phone and refused to hang up with me until they saw what I submitted and that it was what they needed. So, very helpful. We do have notices out for snow and ice on sidewalks. So people need to make sure that within 24 hours of the last snow, that they have cleared their sidewalks off and that they are clear for pedestrian traffic. Those will be fees issued. If it is not cleared off, Public Works will just come clear that off. And I promise you that you can find just about anyone on the planet cheaper than what they're going to charge. So take care of it yourself. Parking tickets have been issued since October 1st. And I take that back November 1st. And people have been honoring those and coming in and paying them on a regular basis. But we still are writing them too. So a lot of them, a majority of them are for the 3 a.m. to 6 a.m. parking issues where you cannot park on a side street. So make sure if you do park on a side street, that it's off of the street by 3 a.m. And that's for snow removal purposes. And after a lot of consideration with the pandemic last year and the way things have been going, rising insurance costs and everything, I did make a decision since I saw you folks last. I have disbanded the reserve program for the police department. We had three reserve officers. They're very loyal. They're very dedicated. And they did a fantastic job. This has nothing to do with them or anything about their performance. But in lieu of the pandemic, I immediately halted any two person cars so the reserves were not riding along with an officer. And they were extremely helpful in large events or parade situations for directing traffic. But insurance has gone up on that. Training requirements from the state have increased greatly. And I just did not see it feasible in continuing at this point. So I contacted them individually, thanked them, but informed them that we would not be continuing with their services as reserve officers. Not a permanent thing necessarily, but at this juncture, it's just definitely something that I think is best for all parties involved. So that's all I have. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, Devin Miller.
Everything is running as usual, helping out with the festivities that are coming up. And the only thing I want to mention on an odd note, I don't know if anybody had seen, and we did find out helicopter and there was a flyover. It was for the Oxford children. It was beautiful. Thank you to the Air Force and my sympathies to those families.
Thank you. Committee reports.
Just a very brief one for everybody's information. The Finance and Ordinance Committee will be meeting next Tuesday, the December 7th at 9 a.m. here in Causel Chambers. Probably run from 9 until 11 or 9 until noon that day.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports?
I canceled my meeting Tuesday because I'd been up long enough, was tired with the surge of COVID. I decided not to. But I did purchase all the stuff to make the sled library, the library for Mud Hill. And I'll get that hopefully constructed this week. And then I had ordered a banner signed to go on that. So once I get there, I'll put it over there and put the few sleds that I have at my house. So if anybody has sleds that they'd like to donate to the city and put in that so people can use, please feel free to contact me or wait until you see the cage. Basically, it'll be out of PVC, and put them in there. We'll find a place to store them, John. We'll figure it out in spring.
So once the cage is there, they can just donate their sled? Okay, but until that time, they should kind of...
Yeah, it looks like that banner was supposed to be delivered on the week of the 17th.
Okay. Great, that'll be good. I saw kids thudding down there last night.
Yeah, I wanted to do it before Thanksgiving, never got to it. Then I was disappointed because all the snow we decided, so...
Any other committee reports, anybody? Okay. Next on our agenda is the presentation of approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
Steve has moved and Larry has seconded that the bills be authorized as presented and paid. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. There is no old business on our agenda. Under new business, we do have several positions that have terms, people serving terms that are expiring in December and January. I have communicated with each person, and they have agreed to be reappointed with one exception. So it appears there will be an open seat on the Planning Commission in January. So if anyone's interested in serving on the Planning Commission, just let me know, and we'll see what people come forward there. In regard to the appointments, we have Bob Attaki, who has agreed to be reappointed to a term expiring in January 2025, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move to approve Mayor's reappointment of Bob Attaki to the Planning Commission for a term expiring in January 2025.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I've communicated with Nicholas Jones by email. He's agreed to be reappointed to a full term. He was serving out a partial term on the Planning Commission. So his new term would expire January 2025, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move to approve the Mayor's reappointment of Nicholas Jones to the Planning Commission for a term expiring in January 2025.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I've communicated with Mike Tobias. He has, he had stepped down, if some of you remember that, from a committee he was on because he moved outside of the city limits. But he also serves on the library board, and he is allowed to continue to serve on that without being a city resident. So he has agreed to serve. It is a one-year term, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move to approve the reappointment of Mike Tobias to the library board for a term expiring January 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's tied second. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And Chris McDibb has agreed to be reappointed to the Board of Review, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move that we approve the Mayor's reappointment to the Board of Review for a term expiring January 2025. So that would be for Chris McDibb.
Thank you. Second?
Yes.
Steve? Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And James Shaw has agreed to a reappointment to the Shawasi Council on Aging Board for a one-year term, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move that we approve James Shaw as the Mayor's reappointment to the SEOA Board with the term to expire January 1st, 2023.
Second.
And we have that motion. All those in favor of it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, Rob, our Building Inspector, Rob Keigho, has heard from the gentleman who was our mechanical and plumbing inspector. And he is stepping away from that position. And so Rob was able to find a mechanical inspector and a plumbing inspector. Thus, we have two appointments by his referral. So I am asking to appoint Joseph Harden as the City of Perry's Mechanical Inspector, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move that we approve the Mayor's appointment of Joseph Harden under the direction of the city Building Inspector and authorize Mayor and Clerk to sign an agreement between city and mechanical inspector.
Motion by Bob, seconded by whoever you wrote down. Larry?
Nope, Mike pointed that way.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And then Rob Keigho has recommended Barry Pennix for the Perry's Plumbing Inspector, if that is satisfactory to the council.
I move that we approve the Mayor's appointment of Barry Pennix under the direction of the city's Building Inspector and authorize Mayor and Clerk to sign agreement between city and plumbing inspector.
Second.
And all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is in regard to the bonus, yearly bonus for non-longevity employees. I think you all have the sheet that shows 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 names of people who are ineligible for longevity. But it has been a tradition to still award them a benefit of $25 each. And that's what we're looking at tonight. Any discussion on that? Any questions that Devin could answer for me?
The tradition has been, I will just add this as the tradition. It started out a gift certificate, a turkey. We found out, the auditors said, "Yeah, you can't do that. Just give them a $25 bonus." So that's what the auditors recommended that we could actually do to the people that do not get a longevity. And then I also want to note, this is a suggestion. This is what has happened every year. It doesn't have to. Previous council and mayor have taken them out, and that's what the motion is saying, except council and mayor. They won't accept the 25. That can change. This is just something, pretty much the same motion that goes in front of the county or council every year. So I just want to make that point, too.
How long has it been, $25 one dollar roughly? A year, five?
Well, let's say five. Because I don't remember exactly.
Is that why you're still gas tank?
I know when I started, it was a gift certificate. So I would have to guess it's been a while. It's changed from a gift certificate to the 25 since I've worked here.
Any other discussion? Recommendations for changing anything?
Do we have the budget to make it a little bit more than $25?
Megan?
We have a total, Megan, of $200 with all the people that there is suggesting. And there is 1, 2, did you say 8? There was 8.
I'm sure there's room for something for it, we don't hear it.
What are you thinking, 40? What do y'all think?
I like it.
You like it? What about you, Bob?
I'm 40, I like it.
Steve? Mindy?
Yeah.
Who wants to make a motion?
I move that we approve a bonus for all those on city payroll that are not eligible for longevity bonuses, except council and the mayor, in an amount not to exceed $40 each.
Second.
Motion for Mike, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next item is in regard to, not if we meet, but when we meet. It's just a yearly thing we have to do to approve the day we meet and the time. So the motion before you is just keeping it the same as it is now. If you want to discuss changing it for any reason, it's open to discussion. What's your pleasure? Any discussion on that?
I move that the city council meetings be set for the first and third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM to be held at 203 West Polly Street, Perry, Michigan, 4872.
Second.
Motion from Steve, seconded by Bob, as read. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any other business that may come before council at this time?
I do.
Okay, Mindy?
Nicole, I didn't catch your last name.
Read already, I did.
And who was the person that you were?
Jonathan Moses.
Moses?
Johnson Moses.
Jonathan.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Moses.
Okay. I was wondering if you were at the meeting on the 18th.
I wasn't here, but I watched it.
You did watch it?
Mm-hmm.
Because I watched it too, because I wasn't here either. And I feel like you've got a lot of misinformation.
I mean, I read his statement. The last two comments were from me, and that's what I picked up on right here. But the reality is, the council has the power to implement in its ordinance. They could have done it instead of opting off in 2018. And you could have done it at any point since then.
Did you, do you get the artist press?
No.
Okay. Do you view the city website?
Yeah, I read that 52 page letter today.
Because the council made some statements with concerns about what was going to be on the ballot and wanted people to be informed. And it was in the artist press, it was on the website. We did attempt to let people know. We did not try to tell people how to vote. We simply were asking people to know what they were voting for.
I definitely read one statement, but Jonathan sent that to me, and I read it verbatim from what he sent. I didn't edit, it's not my fault to edit someone else's words.
I think there's a lot of misinformation. There is at this time on the city website. There is information concerning the Attorney General's opinion. It might be helpful to people who are questioning the motives of council.
Yeah, I read that today, and it is our opinion that that letter from the Attorney General was highly politicized and that you still have to implement the election results, even if you don't agree with them until a court says otherwise.
Nicole, are you an attorney?
Nope.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, based on your opinion.
So you would like to see seven facilities? Is that what you're saying? That's what you would like to have?
Yeah, because that's what people voted for. And also...
Because I don't remember seeing that on the ballot.
It, that part wasn't on the ballot, but...
No, it wasn't.
So in, we, the campaign submits language to the county to go on the ballot, and then the county changes it and approves it before it goes on. We don't get to put the exact language on there.
I don't think the county changes it.
The state mandates that you can only have 100 words or less is where that's coming from. It's not the county doing that. There are state laws that are, that we have to follow that get done for the ballot. And the petition that was given in, that wording was already done. It was proof, but the organization that helped create it and put the petitions out, that wording was already done for us. The county did not, none of that wording. It was just the additional charter amendment was with that petition. So the people had the opportunity to read it to see what they were putting down for a petition.
Are you here as a resident of Perry? Who are you, who are you here representing?
The campaign.
The Shawasi Cares Coalition?
Yes.
Where are they based out of?
I believe the address is in Lebonia.
Livonia? It's a UPS store in Livonia is what was sent over. So that's where you're doing business out of.
Oh, I work from home.
What's your job?
I was a campaign director.
So are you here kind of as a lobbyist?
Unofficially, yeah.
Okay, so you're lobbyists from Livonia representing a group with an address in Livonia wanting to say what we should do in Perry. And you don't understand why that might be a problem to people in Perry?
Well, the people in Perry voted for it.
The people in Perry did not vote for that, Nicole. Let's be truthful. The people in Perry voted for what was on the ballot, and that was not on the ballot. I had a man call me yesterday, and he said, "I want you to know, I voted for medical marijuana." And I said, "Thank you for letting me know. What else did you vote on?" And he said, "I voted for medical marijuana." And I said, "But what did you vote on?" And he got upset with me, I don't blame him. He said, "I voted for medical marijuana." And I said, "That's not all you voted on. Did you read the whole amendment to the charter?" Did you...
Isn't that the responsibility of voters? And we ran it through our campaign. We did six passes of this town.
You did, and you made it perfectly clear to every door you knocked on that they were voting for medical marijuana dispensary in the city.
And nothing more.
That's right.
But there are multiple facilities.
That was not...
That's not what was informed from people walking door to door. I had two people stop at my home, and that's not what they said.
So there's a lot, there's a lot here. Certainly, it will be going to court. It's going to be up to the court to decide how this is addressed. I want the public to realize, each one of us had said it last week, will say it again, however many times it takes. We are not opposed to a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Perry. We have asked our ordinance committee to create an ordinance to allow that. We have asked our planning commission to create zoning that will permit that to happen. We are not opposed to what the voters voted for. They felt they were voting for a medical marijuana dispensary in the city.
I mean, how many people called and told you that?
I mean, how many people called and told you that? How many constituents called and said that they didn't know what they were voting for?
Nobody did.
So how do you know they didn't know what they were voting for?
Well...
We talked to our neighbors.
I do know.
We talked to our neighbors.
They didn't call me.
We live here. You don't.
I've talked to many people. And honestly, Nicole, and everybody here and everybody on camera, when my husband and I were doing our absentee ballot, and we looked at that, we said, "Oh, well, yeah, we'd be for a medical marijuana facility." And I said, "Don't fill it out yet. Let me find out what the rest of this is." So if people just read what was on the ballot, they were voting for a medical marijuana dispensary.
And all the flyers that were passed out by your coalition only focused on medical marijuana dispensary. I probably got no less than half a dozen, either hand-delivered or in the mail, and not one of them talked about seven facilities within the city of Perry that was buried in the 11-page amendment. We tried, as Mindy indicated, we tried to make people aware to go out and educate yourselves and read that 11 pages, recognizing that that's probably not going to happen in many cases. They took what was delivered to them, in our opinion, in my opinion, and based their vote on simply, "We want medical marijuana within the city." I reported earlier that the finance and ordinance committee will be meeting next Tuesday. That's going to be the sole purpose of discussion of that meeting, is to discuss what do we, the city of Perry, need to propose doing around a medical marijuana dispensary within the city of Perry, recognizing that the voters have in fact sent a message that we want a medical marijuana dispensary. We don't, I don't believe that they sent a message that said, "We want seven facilities within the city of Perry." And what's your reasoning for why a city of 2,000 people needs seven facilities? I'd like to know that.
I didn't write it.
So you're paid to think that?
Not paid to think that.
You didn't write it? I don't. It's tough to answer.
I guess my question, that you feel it's okay for people that don't live in the city to, in your group, to push something on a population of 2,000 people to have that many dispensaries. Our city can't handle that. Our employees can't handle that. Why would we be able to handle seven dispensaries? And why did you think we would?
Well, first of all, it doesn't necessarily have to be seven. A lot of those licenses can be combined. I think that the transport and the testing cannot be combined with other licenses, but the rest of them could be combined into one or two locations. So you're not actually looking at, like, seven dispensaries.
But you could be. Or seven licenses. You could be looking at seven licenses.
Seven licenses for growing versus testing.
Regrowing facilities.
Processing.
Yeah, regrowing facilities. Safety compliance, the secure transporter, processor. So the, I believe the safety compliance, the transporter cannot be combined with other licenses. I'm unsure about the processor, but the other ones could be combined into a couple of locations.
Well, I think the gist of the point here, Nicole, and I appreciate you staying for the meeting so we can have this conversation, is that if someone wanted to change the charter of the city to allow this to happen, they should have come to the city and said, "We would like to at least put this on the ballot and get the public's opinion on what they'd like." Nobody did that. Nobody came and said, "We're gonna, we're gonna have this on a vote for your, for this election in November." They just dropped it on the clerk at the deadline of when it had to be turned in. No chance at all to bring it to council for discussion, to bring it to any discussion at all, because you have to meet those deadlines to get that on the ballot. So your company that you are representing knows exactly what they're doing. We have learned that there are, I think it was 11, other municipalities, townships, villages in Michigan, central Michigan, that have had this same thing happen to them in exactly the same way. This is no more than a company that wants to make money trying to railroad a small town that doesn't have the money to oppose them. We are in favor of what our voters want, and that's medical marijuana dispensary. We are not in favor of being railroaded.
And we never have once had a single resident come to a council meeting and say, "We want you to think about having a facility." That has not happened. I have not had anyone approach me personally. I don't know about the other council members.
Have not.
But I have not.
Nope.
I question, if they wanted this, I really wish they would have come and said, "Can we talk about this?" Because we could have done this a whole lot different.
Yeah. It's too bad.
And I also would like for you to explain what you mean by the attorney general's opinion being politicized. I don't understand what you mean by that.
Um, just the, it was one, it didn't actually come from Dana Nessel, it came from her office. Because Dana Nessel is actually pro cannabis.
We're not saying we're not.
That's right.
We're not saying we're not.
I don't know where you keep getting that. We've said it, I don't know how many times, this meeting and last meeting, that nobody here is opposed to the concept, and we're actually working to try to get the ordinance so that we can do it. We're actively working on it.
We are giving the people what they voted for.
We just don't want your version of it, which is pretty backhanded.
And that is the attorney general's office opinion. Not every attorney general's opinion comes from the attorney general. That is an attorney general's opinion. It was done as part of the process of getting it approved to put on the ballot.
I guess my question is, the letter, I read it today, you got that September 12th, and why didn't we move forward with the election?
Because we were told that we had to. There's, there's no, no subversion, no question about why that happened.
Are you, are you wondering why there, I guess, why, why didn't...
Because you named a date of September.
September 12th was the date that...
And your question about that, what, what, that we had time? The city had time?
Yeah.
We don't. The problem is, is again, there's more state rules. And because of our military overseas, we have deadlines to make sure that a ballot is presented to them. So there, you, the petition met its deadline. There's only like three to five days for that turnaround, for that ballot to be printed, proofed, and then has to be available. So that's, that's, that's the problem with it, is if this actual petition would have followed our rules of charter amendments, it should have been 45 days prior to the date of the deadline, which allows it to go in front of council. It gives council the opportunity to say, "Don't put it to a vote, because we're going to make it an ordinance." They weren't given that timeframe, because you were allowed to follow the state laws, which compacted the time. The only thing that council was able to say was, "Recognize it and make a resolution that we recognize that the people have asked for a ballot proposal." And that's all they were allowed to do. Because this was forced by state law, and our law, which allows the people and the mayor and council to work with the people, that was taken away. That time span was taken away.
Well, we do have on our agenda this, this area, and we've kind of fallen into it after any other business of public comment. So I will just offer to anyone in the room, if they have public comment they'd like to bring at this time.
I have a question.
John?
Listening that it was the state rules that were followed, of course overriding, well, it didn't happen in the city rules. Now, if there's a petition formulated by the citizens of Perry, which is so many petitioners sign a petition based upon, I'm not sure what the number is, 15% or 30% of registered voters, could they present a petition to overturn this?
Well, it would certainly have to be something we'd have to ask our attorney. I don't know.
Good question.
Yeah, because, the charter, no. I was around when they redid the charter, dazed myself a little bit. The charter, we had, that's how we became a city, then we've had, we had a charter revision a couple of times, but this last time, all those revisions have to go to the state government, and they have to be signed off by the governor. So therefore...
You missed a step.
Well, a city's got to approve it.
No.
Okay.
You just missed a step at the state level. I think it's important. This is a good subject, and this is a good education. If it would have been followed correctly and had the amount of time that follows what our charter amendment says, it goes, and it needs that 45 days, because it goes to the attorney general to approve the wording of the ballot, which is 100 words or less. Then it goes to the governor's office and is approved. This situation, for some reason, and I don't understand it, they did not have to follow the rule and have that approved by the governor before it went on the ballot. And I don't understand that. There is some loophole in the state law that allowed this petition to be treated differently than what we usually, as a city, follow the rules to do a charter amendment.
Okay, now I understand. I was just lost where you're saying that the state could just override what, because of...
Typically, we can be stricter than what the state rules are. That didn't apply in this one either. I don't know. I am not an attorney. I don't know why. But this was be, was able to be followed at a state law level and skip our law, which is very unusual.
So stay tuned.
Well, do get, if you have a chance, and I'd strongly suggest that you read the attorney general's opinions that's posted on our website. It does help to clarify. Just if you have a chance, read that. And then if you have questions about it, feel free to contact any one of us, Devon, and if we don't know the answer, we'll find it out for you.
I have a quick question. How easy is it to find on the website? Because I had a resident email me, and I said, "Oh, should we post it?" And then he emailed back and said, "It's not there," or he couldn't find it. I did not look.
It's right on the front page.
In the middle of the front row page.
Okay, I did not look, so I figured I'd ask.
It's right, right in the middle of the...
I think it's one of the few things...
I referred to that opinion, and what the city's opinion was based on that. And everyone here knows my, what I, the last time about the voters, so...
And we agree with you, Bob. We absolutely agree with you. We want to do
That's what I said.
what they want, for the good of the city. If we follow that charter amendment to its letter, though, it will bankrupt us, and it will hinder our ability to function. If we can satisfy the will of the voters by starting with a medical marijuana provision center, writing that in our ordinance, and get that going, see how that goes, if it goes well, and the city residents want more than that, then they can come to us and say, "We want more. We want something in addition to this." And we would be delighted to hear from you.
I invited the two people that got there, the little one I reached out to, to come to council. And I invited anybody else to come to council, talk to us. So that's the only way we know how the citizenry feels, and their opinions, is if they come and talk to us. Because you can't look at social media, because half of us are not informed.
Correct. So we're happy, happy to hear from you all. There is one other item of business that I just wanted to bring up to council. Shirley let me know that she has a city calendar mailing going out the end of December. It talks about the calendar for the upcoming year for trash pickup, leaf pickup, all that stuff. And she said, "There's room in that envelope if there's anything we want to include." So give that some thought, if there's any, anything you want to have included in that. When Devon sent out a business mailing, we included something in there, and that worked out really well. And so if council has something you want included in that, let me know, or let Devon know. Any other business, any other discussion that needs to take place tonight?
One quick item, just a reminder for everyone, that next Tuesday, we're going to do the annual Christmas light contest judging at 7:00, 7:00 PM. That's Tuesday the 7th. Many of the council people will have all of the winners from last year will be part of the judging group that will make our way through town and convene afterwards and make selections, any of the council members and significant others that are able to participate. We'd love to have you. We're going to meet outside here at 6:45 next Tuesday evening.
You just do kind of a caravan of tires.
We do a caravan through, through the city, and just make notes in terms of what we, what we enjoyed and what we liked, and then we'll consent, meet and consents afterwards in terms of, first place winner receives $100. Second and third place each receive $50 recognition.
Anything else, council? Has any, any items that you want to bring to Devon's attention? Agenda items for the next meeting?
I'm just waiting. We're going to have a sin one next week? Two weeks?
Then at 8:28, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.